Anthony Perron. Is Anthony Perron here? No? Okay. Antonia Mendoza? I'm sorry? Alright, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking out the time to hear the people here. As I'm sitting here listening to so many of the tenants, one reoccurring concern that keeps coming up is if we're being considered human beings. It's none of my business what you think of me when you go home and sit at your dinner table. What does concern me is that when you make your decision, that you consider me a human being. And if I have to beg you to make the right decision, then something is wrong. I shouldn't have to ask you to roll back rent so that we can afford to live with dignity. On the 16th of this month will be two years as a new resident in the Bronx. I'm displaced from Brooklyn. I've already seen this. This is old hat to me, but this is the last stand for me. There is nowhere else to go. The Bronx is it for me. My family and my husband, my three children, we pay well over 50% of our income for our rent. And it's a shame that we have to juggle, "Well, can we buy food enough to last until the next paycheck?" That shouldn't exist. And I came here to the Bronx from the shelter. We didn't want to go into the shelter. And there were days where my family and I, we slept in, you know, I hate to say it, we slept in emergency room waiting areas. The kids still had to go to school and my husband and I still had to go to work. So I need you, when you make this decision, to please remember that we are people. We are not beneath you. We will never will be. So we just want to make sure that you consider us as people. When you go home and close your door, you can think whatever you like, but when you make this decision, as far as the housing, please, roll it back, freeze it, but do what you can, do what you have to, so that we can live here in our city. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
For Anthony Perron?
Hi, yes. So, this is Anthony's testimony. Hi, my name is Anthony and I am a CASA member. I live at 901 Walton and have since the 1970s with my family. Since March of 2016, we've had an MCI in our building that has increased our rent $50 a month and will continue to increase every year, $50 a month, until it reaches $212 increase. And that's added on to my rent. And then you want to raise the rent on top of that. And that's unacceptable. You need to give us time to catch up with our rent because of these MCIs. And we need relief from you and you can provide that relief. We need a little room to breathe to be able to afford these increases that are already going to be happening. Again, up to $212 per month added to our rent. And these increases would happen on top of that. In the past five years landlords have been granted[229.34][230.02]$976,216,412 in MCIs. And then he asked if you have been charged any of these MCI increases or any of these kinds of increases in your rent. Because then you might understand the kind of burden it causes for families. Additionally, he kept hearing people say in their own testimony and said, "Almost half of the people I heard in this room giving testimony had MCIs." This is an epidemic in the Bronx. And it's unacceptable. It continues to raise our rents to amounts that we can't pay. And that's the reason that we need a rent rollback. So thank you for letting me speak on Anthony's behalf, but he very strongly wanted me to say and underlined it a few times, "We need a rent rollback."
Thank you. Tahika Fredericks? Tahika Fredericks? She left? Okay. Oh, you went already? Okay. You have some duplication here. Okay. The next speakers are Nova Lucero, Victoria Banks, and Wendellin Robinson. Nova Lucero.
Can I get some fists up? Fists up? Okay. Who here has had to move because of rent increases? Who's here has had to move in with family because of rent increases? Who has had or knows friends or family who has had to leave the state for some time to, you know, save up money to move back because of rent increases? Who has had to go into shelter because of rent increases? You can put your fist up for everybody in solidarity. You don't have to come out. Who has become street homeless because of rent increases? Who has had less food to eat or no food to eat because of rent increases? Who has been unable to provide themselves or their children with basic necessities like clothing, shoes, toilet paper because of rent increases? Who has been unable to save up money for college for their kids because of rent increases? Who lives in fear of rent increases? Who is living paycheck to paycheck because of rent increases that the RGB is in charge of? Who has been overcharged in rent? And who here has had a landlord claim that they owe money that they don't, but has been intimidated to say anything? The rent... Thank you. Power system. The Rent Stabilization Association of New York has more than doubled its lobbying efforts in 2016, jumping from the $1.4 million it spent in 2015. It has spent $3.6 million on issues like rent regulation and property taxes, things that affect us directly as tenants. Now, we have weak rent laws because of these landlords who are lobbying. Because of that. And yet it is inconceivable for the Rent Guidelines Board to even consider a rent rollback. Kathleen, David, Cecilia, Hillary, Helen, do you know how much money landlords actually make? $3.6 million is spent on lobbying. And yet some of you public members believe that landlords really don't have enough money to make repairs. That, and that's why you have a justification for rent increases. Some of the RGB members also believe that New York City won't function if landlords don't get their rent increases. What do you guys feel about that? Every day, every day, the organization I work for, Met Council on Housing, receives hundreds, and I count, hundreds of calls from tenants across New York City who call just because they can't afford the rent. Just because of that. No other reason. Rent increases are decided by the Rent Guidelines Board. And, and yet you guys seem to think that you have no power to impact the 2 million families living in 1 million rent stabilized apartments. So I'm going to echo what a lot of people have said already, is vote your conscience and vote for a rent rollback because you do know that this is what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Banks? Victoria Banks? Wendellin Robinson? Okay. The next, the next speakers are Cecilia Grant, Thomas Suarez, and Lourdes Silvestri.
I started my career in the South Bronx at the worst school in 1981 and took it to number two. It was me and my drug dealing beautiful kids that enacted the drug-free zone, not the federal government. I've been away from New York for 12 years during the Bloomberg slaughter. I came back in the Christmas of 2013 just to look for an apartment. I can't find one. Now, I'm looking at everybody in this room except for the one white supporter. This is a racist thing. This is racist, okay? Our Latinos are on the train like me. And they have homes. 12, 16 hours a day. When do they get a chance to go home? To shit, shower, and shave, to get out, to make money for a house that they can't live in? Rush hour used to be from 9 to maybe 6 is 24 hours. I'm fighting for myself to get an apartment. I've stood in front of aliens from another planet like you, CDC, H-U-D-H-P-D. And they look at me like I'm the alien from another planet. What human cannot understand? Shelter, clothing, food. These are three necessities. Anything else is a luxury. You are owners up here. You get your vacations, you got your boat, your houses. You don't see white people in housing court? All I see here is Latinos and one, one white supporter. And you want more money? Your leeches. What don't you understand? I wish that I could speak Klingon. Maybe you will understand that you cannot be from this planet. What is it that green matters more than human blood? We come from slavery. 400 years ago and you're still treating us like slaves and we're paying for it. No rollbacks. Interpret it to any language, whatever planet you come from.
Thomas Suarez? Thomas Suarez? Lourdes Silvestri? Thomas Suarez? Thomas Suarez? Okay, sorry. That's you? Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. All the sisters and brothers who spoke before me spoke to me and said, "And write this down so we won't have to keep repeating the same thing." Here we go. I'll now give you plenty good reason for me to need not a rent increase, but a decrease, a rollback.
Okay, can we get the interpretation, please?
So, it's my understanding that landlords are doing this for business. They're in business. So it stands to reason that they must be doing well out of this, they're making money. I started thinking about just my apartment building, which is made up of 58 apartments. If, and the rent for those apartments is between $1,000 and $1,700 per month. So monthly, they would be bringing in between $75,000 or $80,000 or $100,000. Which, by these numbers, it probably means that they're making a 20 or 30% profit on what they're taking in, on their investment. And if you look at the people in this room, we're not making 30% of our income, and which is enough. We're not, oh, 30% of our income is not enough to cover rent. No, we sit down with you. We sit down with you. So why should we keep helping the landlords get more profit when they're not holding up their end and providing repairs and services? There's, we're facing, you've heard all night about people facing situations with rats, mice, roaches, snakes, leaks, mold, whatever. And, you know, why? And por eso, and por eso, snakes. And this is why we need a rent rollback, not an increase. Thank you.
Lourdes Silvestri? Is Lourdes Silvestri here? Okay. The next speaker is Maribel, but we don't have a last name. Is Maribel here? Can we get your last name?
Maribel Nuesi. Nuesi, N-U-E-S-I.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, le digo. Buenas noches. Mira, me alegra verte sonreir porque no te he visto ninguna de la noche sonreír a ti.
Okay, can we get an interpretation, please?
Good night to the board and to everybody. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to see you smiling because I haven't seen you smiling any other time that you've been here. And I respect you and... So I'm gonna ask a question. I don't expect an answer because I just see you sitting there quietly. But why would I have to pay the owner of my building for an air conditioner charge when I don't even have one? Why?
Y yo no tengo que pagarle a él más, todo lo año, como se dice, aumento de renta porque él no me arregla, no me repara. Quien paga la reparación de mi apartamento soy yo. Tuve que comprar, yo de mi dinero, y tuve que comprar un lava mano porque no servía. Tengo el recibo de mi tarjeta de crédito que lo pagué yo. Porque no me lo quiso cambiar, tuve que comprar el gabinete. ¿Y por qué yo tengo que pagarle a él más? Por las cuatro paredes, no.
Okay, we need to get the interpretation, please?
Alright, so why should I have to pay an annual rent increase to my landlord when I'm not getting repairs and I'm not getting, he's not taking care of the place? When I'm the one who's paying for repairs and going out of pocket? I had to replace the sink in the cabinet underneath because I'd asked for it to be repaired and it wasn't. I still have the receipts from my credit card for it. So why would I have to pay for work that isn't being done? Also, if they're installing cameras in my building, why would I have to pay for it? That's not my property. That's not mine.
Can we get the interpretation, please?
Por un año, cobrarte, cargarte por un año cuando tú renoves el lease. Porque a la mayoría que no saben, que no hablan, le están cobrando hasta 100 y algo a por el new deli.
Ah, por la renovación? Alright, so, also, there are many people who stand by quietly and are afraid to speak out when they run into problems, but I'm not one of them. I talk. But, right. They're not supposed to, when you go to renew your lease, they're not supposed to charge you for a year for that. And instead of that, there are many of my neighbors who have had, who are having to pay $124 extra for just the lease renewal. Todos los meses. All the month. And who should I complain to to stop them trying to charge me for the air conditioner? Who do I talk to?
Gracias, Maribel.
DHCR.
Gracias.
Thank you. So, the next speakers, the next speakers are Michelle Jen Ross, Lourdes De La Cruz, and Hakim Salam.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Jen Ross. I live at 1417 Grand Concourse and I've lived there for the last 36 years. My landlord is HUD and Standby One Associates. What we go through is, my apartment needs a whole lot of repairs. I need my closets in my hallway and my bedroom fixed. The shelves in my closet are broke. I can't put anything in them. My bathroom, the toilet leaks every day. My tub needs to be replaced. It looks like somebody got physically sick in it. And also, I need a new refrigerator, a new stove, and one of my cabinets needs a new door on it. I have complained to my landlord. He knows all this. And he has told me that he does not care. All he wants is my money. And, and I say, I pay my rent every day. I'm on a fixed income. And now I'm struggling. I don't know where my next food is coming from. And I say to you, ladies and gentlemen, that, do you have hearts? Do you care at all? Do you know that we are people, just like you? We have the same needs, the same wants, the same desires that you do. We have families who love us, who love them, who we love as well. And we need to be together. We're all people. We're all the same. We might have different names, different religions, different beliefs, but we are all people. We were all created as one. And I say to all my brothers and sisters right here, we can make a difference. We have to, we are, you know what I say? We ourselves have to forget about, "I don't like you because you speak this language. I don't like you because you have that face." We are one people. If we come together, we can do it. We don't, we, we could bring it to their attention, but if we fight for ourselves and stick together, no one can stop us. But we are people and we are strong. We know how to thrive and survive and no one can stop us but us. I say to you, my brothers and sisters, I love you all. I care for you all. Come together. Forget about what you don't like about me. But look at us. We're all the same. We all hurt. And I'm suffering too. I don't need a rent increase. Because I'll tell you, right now, I cannot afford to buy my own food. I have no, I have no clothes. I can't even buy a bottle of water. That's our bed. And I worked for a long time. And now, it's just saying, it's just like saying, "I have nothing. I have accomplished nothing." But I will tell you this, I am victorious anyway. Because I, I woke up today and I had a possibility. I always have possibilities every time I wake up. And I say to you, board members, please, look at us as human beings. We, we're not animals. We are people just like you. And we deserve the same things that you deserve. We have worked hard for what we have. And we don't deserve to have it taken from greedy landlords that don't care about us. All they want is our blood, sweat, and tears and money. And that's it. And we can't get to the point where the only thing that's important is the greenback, is that money. And we mean the ones that crinkle. It can't be that. We have to all do it together. And I'm asking you to take into consideration what we have all said and the struggles that we're going through. And remember this, when nobody else wanted the Bronx, we stayed. And we fought for it. And we helped to build it back up. And now it's not right that we have it taken from us because of greedy landlords. And I thank you each and everyone. And everyone have a blessed and wonderful night and get home safely. Thank you.
Lourdes De La Cruz?
Mi nombre es Lourdes De La Cruz. Vivo en el 1505 de Townsend Avenue. Soy orgullosamente líder de casa y tengo 10 años viviendo aquí en el sur del Bronx.
My name is Lourdes De La Cruz. I live in the 1505 of Townsend Avenue and I have been living there for 10 years and I'm a proud member of CASA.
Y mi casero se llama Sam Rossi.
And my landlord is Sam Rossi.
Yo creo que solamente Harvey y Sheila de la Junta saben lo que significa organizar un edificio. Le voy a explicar a los otros que no saben para que puedan entender un poquito más por qué nosotros hablamos así y por qué pedimos una reducción de renta.
I think that out of the panel, only Harvey and Sheila know how to organize a building. But I'm gonna tell you what it takes to organize a building so that you learn why is that we're here talking about these issues and why do we ask what we ask and why do we ask a rent rollback.
Organizar un edificio significa recoger firmas. Organizar un edificio significa tocar puertas, llamar al 311, empoderar a nuestros vecinos, llamar a la prensa, hablar con la prensa, buscar un abogado, llevar al casero a la corte. Todo eso significa organizar un edificio.
So organizing a building means to collect signatures, to go door knocking, to call three one one, to talk to the press, to bring the press, to find a lawyer, talk to the lawyer, take them to court.
Y asistir a todos los talleres que hagan las instituciones, para que no digan que nosotros somos ignorantes, nosotros conocemos las leyes y nuestros derechos.
And we also attend all the workshops that organizations and institutions offer, so that, that people don't say that we're ignorant, that we don't know our laws, and that we don't know our, what our rights are.
Y todo esto simplemente para que nos den, para que nos den condiciones básicas reales, por la que nosotros pagamos nuestro dinero, hay que hacer todo eso para tener condiciones básicas.
And so we have to do all of these things simply for us to obtain basic conditions, we have to do all of these just to get the basics.
Entonces después de todo eso, nosotros tenemos condiciones básicas aceptables, un elevador de paquete, que eso significa como que me voy a, como que todos nos vamos a morir, como eso significa un MCI, y todos estamos seguros que no vamos a morir cuando nos ponen algo así, un elevador de paquete, nos arreglan algo colectivo, lo seguro es MCI.
And sometimes we feel that we are going to, it is like, it's like we're dying when we get a, a new elevator, it feels like we're gonna die after that we have gotten the, the, the minimum basic conditions, and then what we see is that when we get the minimum basic conditions, that's, that's an MCI.
Y ya hemos dicho que los caseros en los últimos seis años han hecho más de un billón, un billón, no billón, billón.
And we have seen that land, uh, the landlords have already made not one million, one billion dollars in the past six years.
Dos cosas más, ya no necesitamos aumento de renta, ya tenemos un MCI seguro, entonces ya yo no necesito, ya no necesito aumento, lo que necesito es una reducción.
We don't need a rent increase, we already have MCIs, so what we need is a, is a rent rollback.
Y si todavía, con todo lo que ustedes han escuchado esta noche, necesitan más pruebas y más razones para entender el por qué nosotros necesitamos una reducción de renta, cuando vayan al baño pueden ver algunas fotos que explican visualmente las condiciones de nuestros apartamentos aquí en el Bronx.
And if you need even more proof of what, after what we all have said here tonight, you can see some pictures when you go to the, to the bathroom, you can see the conditions where, how we live in the Bronx.
Si se puede, si se puede.
Hakim Salam.
Si se puede, si se puede, si se puede, si se puede.
Hakim Salam. Okay, the next speakers will be Justina Marte, Abigail Rodriguez, and Juana Nivar. Justina Marte.
Yes.
My name is Mary Powell.
Is Powell, did you sign up?
Yes, I did, for the longest time. My name is Mary Powell, and I live here in the Bronx more than forty years, and the people that's, the new landlord now is called, um, Chestnut Holdings, they are one of the worst in New York City. I have lost two rental check, sent in the mail, they miss it, sent in the mail, they miss it, I had to travel for two years, paying ten dollars on the money order from the bank every month, I mean, to make sure the rent got there. My question today is that, I just signed a lease recently, and in the lease is that, the two-year lease I signed, my rent is in, is focusing, it said this is what I'll be paying in, um, in May, okay, here it is on the ma, on the rent, the, the receipt that comes for the rent this month, I paid the, 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 the rent that was ordered on, in April, and in May, it's a whole new rent, they're telling me on my receipt that no longer do I pay what's on the, the, the rent that I signed, I mean, my new lease I signed, it's a whole new bill, so what I mean, MCI has charged me for paying money when I put in a new lease, plus they added more money on the new receipt to tell me this is what my payment will be from now on, so who do I speak to? How much rent am I supposed to be paying? The lease said, okay, I'm gonna use an example, let's say the lease said I'm paying eleven hundred dollars, and, and that's, that's added on to it with the MCI, added the extra forty dollars that I had to put on there, and then now, I'm looking in the rent receipt, and it's added on another sixty-five dollars, what's going on? That's a lot of money, and, and I'm adding sixty, it's probably more, I, I can't even remember how much it is, but it's unfair, what's going on? I, I just want you guys, the lease, take into real consideration, that we don't need a rent increase, because it's gonna be hell. Another thing I'm gonna lay off for the landlord, landlord has never paid in my apartment, I've always hired somebody to pay in my apartment, I have never had my apartment paid with the landlord, I've had four landlords in that building that I am right now, and never, not one of them have come, I have the, the tall, uh, ceiling for picking up, for dishes, I can't even reach it, I can't get them to do anything, but I'm still there, all I'm saying is please help, please help us, I'm getting retired in a couple of years, and I would like to come out on top, by not to get ready to just have to get me out of that apartment, because I'm not leaving, I'm not leaving. Yankee Stadium is growing too much in this, in this part of the south right now, they're fixing the streets, I ain't going nowhere, because all the tax dollars that Yankees ain't paying, it's coming out of my chest.
Thank you. Justina Marte.
So just to answer your questions, though the staff outside should have information about DHCR, which is a state agency, so you can get your rent history and know if you're paying the legal rent, and if you're not, you're able to apply for an overcharge to reduce the rent to the what it should be legally, um, charged.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Justina Marte.
Buena noche, mi nombre es Justina Marte, y soy miembro de Casa, yo vivo en el quince treinta de Sheridan, uno de los edificios de Park Rush, del, del peor lando del, de Nueva York.
My name is Justina Marques, I live in fifteen thirty Sheridan, and, and the landlord is Cars, Park Rush, one of the worst landlords of New York City.
Yo vivo por treinta y dos años en mi apartamento, y, the problem de ese edificio es las reparaciones, el lando nunca quiere pagar un profesional para repararlo, eh, el, lo damage, siempre él le paga al super, que el super no sabe trabajar, él lo que hace es una porquería, y así él quiere que le firmen los papeles para que le paguen a él, o comienza el trabajo y no lo termina, es un edificio que tiene ratas, cucaracha, no limpian los pasillos.
Uh, I'm a Casa member, I have lived in my apartment for thirty-two years, and the problem in our building is repairs, the landlord never wants to pay a professional to make these repairs, the superintendent makes a mess, or, and doesn't know how to work, and, or, or either, and he sometimes starts the work and never ends, we have, uh, roaches, we have rats.
Uh, la puerta del frente, ah, la rompe, rompen, la, rompen la, la cerradura, a veces no estamos seguros en el edificio, porque entran mucha gente rara, de otro lugar, y, y también este, yo he tenido mucho problema tanto con el super como con el lando, porque yo siempre tengo liquido en el baño, en el ceiling, y solo van y, eh, quitan el pedazo de, de, que está dañado, vuelven y lo ponen, lo pintan, pero el problema no es, no, no es, eh, arreglar, sino que el problema es, está, de tubería, porque ya, ya yo tengo treinta y dos años viviendo ahí, y toda la vida yo he tenido ese problema.
The front door is, is open, we have no safety, strangers come in, and out freely, uh, I have had a lot of problems with the super and with the landlord, because I have leaks in the ceiling all the time, and what they do is that they just remove the, the piece that is damaged, and then just paint it over, but they, they don't fix it, and I know that that's a plumbing issue, because I've lived there for thirty-two years, and we have had problems since I moved in.
Y, hay mucha persona que, que viven de, eh, ahí, con, que tienen que, trabajan duro para pagar su renta, que no, pues, que no la pueden pagar, y no queremos, no queremos más aumento de renta, porque, eh, demasiado para, eh, para, un aumento de renta para un edificio que no tiene condiciones.
And there are a lot of people in my building that work really hard and can't afford rent anymore, we don't want, and we don't need a rent increase, because they don't deserve, these buildings that don't have fair con, living conditions don't deserve it.
So, eh, yo, yo vivo de sesión ocho, yo tengo sesión ocho, pero también tengo problema con el programa, porque cuando el inspector va a, a hacer las revisiones, eh, pues siempre encuentra, eh, encuentra damage, encuentra, eh, que no, que nada para ello, nada está bien, y el lando manda a, a reparar, pero como digo, comienzan pero no terminan, no hacen las cosas como tiene que hacer.
And I have section eight, and I also have, eh, problems with that program, when the inspectors come, for them, nothing is ever in good condition, and, and on the other hand, the landlord never, never fixes, and they don't do what they have to do.
Eso es todo, gracias.
That is all, thank you. Thank you. Abigail Rodriguez. Is Abigail Rodriguez here?
Sheila.
Sheila, thank you. Juana Nivar.
Juana, you be a little sleepy, y I like coffee.
Is Juana here? No? Okay. The next three speakers will be Antoinette Rose, Carmen Esquia, and Patricia Charles. Antoinette Rose.
Good evening, my name is Antoinette Rose, and I reside at two forty-one East Machula Parkway North, apartment four G, for seventeen years. I need a rent rollback because of my grandmother diabetes, I have to now purchase her supplies or strips so she can get tested for her diabetes, she's on a set income, and her Medicaid, Medicare has been dropping, and it's not working out, and they've cut in a lot of the stuff that she used to get, so now I have to make sure that I'm able to purchase her, her supplies so she can test for her blood sugar. We need a rollback, because paying a thousand dollars for one bedroom, and it's not livable, the conditions are horrible, my ceiling has been dropped, the bathroom, the water's still coming down, and the landlord keep on telling me that, um, there's nothing that they can do, all they have to do is break the walls and fix the pipes in the walls, that's all it is, we need a good plumber to come in and fix the repairs properly, okay? Livable wages, everything is going high, and if the rent is gonna go and I have to pay fifty percent out of my salary for rent, where am I gonna get, find money to buy clothes to go to work, food, to put the energy in my body to go to work, and still have to find ways to pay the rent, so we really do need a rollback.
Thank you. Carmen Esquia.
Buenas tardes a todos, y gracias por venir.
Good evening, thanks for coming.
Y le quiero dar las gracias por venir, de verdad que sí.
I'm really thankful for you.
Yeah, le quiero hacer una pregunta, eh, quiero preguntarle si podemos contar con ustedes.
Uh, I would like to ask you a question, I would like to ask if we can count on you.
Porque, um, también, oyendo todas las que ellas, que todo, han dicho aquí, todas se aplican a mí también, pero quiero ser breve, quiero ser breve.
Because I'm hearing all these complaints, and I feel the same, I'm going through the same, and I wanna be brief.
Yes, because I understand that you guys gotta go, so mire, eh, yo tengo la misma situación en mi building, eh, mi building es aquí, mi mito, nueve siete cinco de Walton Avenue, y tenemos un building de puras violaciones.
I live very close, nine seventy-five Walton Avenue, and, and we have the same problems, right? We have a building with, with all violations possible.
Por cierto, hoy, yo soy también participante de sesión ocho, de la cual, tú sabes, no me avergüenzo, y precisamente hoy estuve, tuve que, tuve una impresión, y la impresión, okay, pasó, pero no estoy segura, yo también tengo, estoy, estoy un poco asustada porque me mandaron una carta para moverme del building, y es por pausa también de las violaciones que hay, aparte de la renta que no puedo también pagarla, porque encima me aumentaron mi parte de renta, y no puedo, en verdad, tengo dos meses que atraque, atrasada, y me tengo que mudar encima de eso.
And, by the way, I'm, I'm part of section eight, the section eight program, and I'm not ashamed of it, uh, and I received, and I'm a little scared today, because I received this letter that is asking me to move to another building because of the violations in the building, but I'm also, eh, I think, eh, I also received a notification of, that they are raising my rent, and they are raising my part of the rent, and I'm, I'm scared, because I cannot, uh, cover that cost anymore, and I'm a little behind in rent, so I'm, I'm, I'm nervous today.
Yes, so entonces lo que quiero decirle también, que aparte de mi situación, eh, también considerando la situación de todos los, de todos los que, que se han quejado, eh, por favor, tomen en cuenta, en esas consideras, considérenle, y que si pueden oírle, por favor, oigan la voz de todas estas personas, se quejan, se quejan, por favor, eh, ustedes también son parte, igual que nosotros, como nosotros de ustedes, nosotros somos parte de ustedes también, ¿me entienden?
And I, I want to tell you that, you please, that, I wanna tell you that you should listen, and that, please listen and take into account what these people today are, are, are saying, what we are saying, because we are part of what you are, we are, we are the same, so please listen.
Y, por, volviendo un poquito para atrás con mi situación, eh, ahora mismo, yo estoy pensando, cómo, dónde voy a conseguir dinero, porque en verdad, yo no tengo los, yo no tengo el dinero para mudarme, entonces estoy pensando cómo voy a hacer mi vida de ahora en adelante, yo tengo dos niños también, entonces, entonces este, por favor, ayúdenme, escuchenme, porque yo sé que si ustedes no escuchan, esto puede mejorar, esta es una situación que viene de muchos años, yo tengo treinta años viviendo en este país, y tengo diez en este, en este condado, y diez en Manhattan, y así he ido mudándome y mudándome por la situación de la renta.
And so going back with, going back to my situat, my personal situation, uh, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about that, I don't have the money to move, I, I'm, I'm worried about how to get the money to move, so I wanna ask you to please help us, I have lived thirty years in this country, I have moved, I have moved from borough to borough, and, and this is a situation, and I think that you can help us, if you, if you hear us, you can help us, please help us.
Y eso es todo lo que quiere decir, yo les, yo les respeto, y por favor, tomen en cuenta, y piensen, piensen en nosotros también, so, se lo dejo hasta aquí, y el señor le bendiga.
I respect you, and I really wanna ask you to please listen to us, and God bless you.
May the Lord bless you.
Thank you. Patricia Charles. Patricia Charles.
Good evening. My name is Patricia A. Charles. And most of my sisters and brothers, they live in different housing complexes. But I live in NYCHA. I'm even fighting for NYCHA. Because even though NYCHA is a landlord, they're not providing for the things that we deserve. I am sixty-five years old and I don't, even though I don't look it, trust me. I'm sixty-five years old. I just have my MetroCard. Here you go. Senior. I'm a senior, okay? I'm glad you're smiling. This is not a joke. And we're not here to beat you up, trust me. We're not here to make you look bad. We're just asking you to help us for the ones who are making you look bad. We thank you for being here. We thank you for supporting us. If that's what you're gonna do when you go back behind your closed doors and think real hard, be compassionate, understand that we might have to come live with you. I'm truly serious. I'm truly serious. That's another smile on your face. But I'm trying to keep it real. Really, we're trying to keep it real. We are hurting so badly. I have a special needs young man. He's thirty-one years old, can't get a job. So, he's working on what I'm making. We don't have food stamps. We're just about, I don't know how many dollars over that we can't get food stamps. But we can't get food stamps. Even though I look presentable, you do not know the trouble that I see behind my closed doors. I'm hurting. We need to eat. We need, I don't even buy clothes. It's years and years and years. You wear the same thing, but you just know how to change it. Okay? But this is from the old school in which we wanna make sure that you understand we care about you. So, please, care about us. There's so many people that couldn't even make it here because they don't even know about these things. But then, there's other people that they depend on to bring things back. So, can you please look at and be compassionate about what we're asking you? Roll back the rent. Freeze the rent. 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 Because we deserve to live just like you, sweetheart. And we love you. We just want everybody to go home safe. But please, think about it long and hard. You're just the token people that they put here in front of us. We're not here to beat you up. We wanna thank you for being here. Thank you so much.
The next speakers are James Berkley, Ernest Gregory, and Aja McHenry. Is James Berkley here?
You ready for me? All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James T. Berkley Jr. I live in fourteen Marcy Place for twenty-eight years. Well, technically, I had to move back home twice to help my mother because you keep raising the rent. While the landlord, as of Martin Cole, keeps raising the rent. When my mother's rent is more than her check, that makes no sense. When my mother can't even help my sister go to college, that makes no sense. When I gotta stop going to school and I recently just graduated from my bachelor's, that makes no sense because I gotta help my mother, I gotta help my sister, and I gotta help my grandmother. When I live in a building that elevator works when it wants to work. Matter of fact, let's go back a little further. Couple of years back, I slipped and fell in my own building. I'm walking around right now with four dislocated discs in my back. I had surgery on my knee. I'm only twenty-eight years old. My landlord is not doing nothing for us. We're supposed to have two revs to walk down the stairs. We don't have that. I got a grandmother that's over eighty years old that if the elevator don't work, she can't go nowhere. So, what are we doing? What's going on here? When we sit there, we talk about him, the first thing he says is, oh, let's go to court. So, you wanna take my mother to court because we're telling you about the problems that we have? They recently just painted and redid everything in our house for the past five years. We didn't have none of that. We was walking around. My sink right now, if you turn on my sink, it'd sound like gunshots. That makes no sense. What are y'all doing? Help me, help them. At the end of the day, I'm working three jobs just to make sure my mother got a house, a roof over her head. That shit makes no sense. Can I prosper for myself? Can my future prosper? I wanna have kids too, but I can't do that because I gotta help my mother first. But until y'all help us, what's up? Really and truly, let me know what's up. And I went to school for business administration. I wanna own my own business. I wanna sit up there and say, I live in the Lower East Side too, but I wanna live in Bronx. I'm telling you the truth. You make more money than us, so y'all don't know how we feel. Imagine if your kids gotta come back home and live with you.
Ernest Gregory. Good evening.
Good evening. When Moses went before Pharaoh and told him to let the children of Israel go, Pharaoh did not listen and he hardened his heart and suffered the plagues of opposition. Let not your decision incur a similar justice. I heed you to listen to the hearts and voices of those of the oppressed tenants and residents here tonight. My name is Ernest Gregory. I live at eight 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 Grand Concourse in the Bronx. I'm a senior citizen and a resident of the Bronx. I represent a significant sector of the population that will be affected by your decision. The senior citizens here in the Bronx. You are mandated by law to construct your decision regarding rent rollbacks with me and every other senior being affected by a rent increase in your decision. I am not asking you to stop rent increases. I am demanding you stop rent increases. You are the barrier to holding back economic inequality. Stop this plague. Commit to the good fight. So, like so many voices you have heard here tonight, I'm instructing you to follow your mandate and not implement any rent increases because it is the law and the God of all things is watching you.
Thank you. Aja McHenry. Aja McHenry. The next speakers are Candace Whitehead, Pablo Estubaman, and Sandra Lobo.
Evening. My name is Candace Whitehead. I live at seventeen twenty-nine Walton. I've lived at this residence for the past nineteen years. This is the place that I've come to call home. And this time, five different managements have taken over my building with countless supers that have come and gone, that have done good repairs and bad repairs. As a young New Yorker just trying to make it in this city, I don't find it fair when wind continuously goes up and we as tenants still live in poor conditions. From needing new paint jobs to ceilings leaking every time it rains, no heat in the winter, light switches working when they want to, sockets not working at all, to bedrooms only having one socket, which is a fire hazard, to broken building doors, broken security cameras, and broken building entrances where crackheads can lurk in the hallways day in and night. It's unfair. Me, as a mother of a five-year-old, I fear for our safety. I don't find it fair when rent keeps going up, when us as working individuals have working wages that don't go up as well. In most cases, some needing roommates just to make ends meet as to where they can afford to keep their homes and provide for their families. Not to mention landlords trying to get over with permanent leases year in and year out. These are some of the reasons as to why us as tenants deserve a rent rollback. And this is why, so they can just stay in their homes. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Pablo Estubaman. Is Pablo here?
Buenas noches, mi gente. ¿Qué queremos? ¿Cuándo? Good evening, everyone. What do we want? When do we want it? Entonces estoy aquí esta noche porque quería dejar a todos saber que parte de mi trabajo es organizando la coalición que se llama que no queremos más MCI's. So, I'm here tonight. I wanted to let everyone know that I've been working and organizing a tenant coalition called the No More MCI Tenant Coalition. En Casa son once edificios con novecientos familias luchando contra casi diez millones de dólares en aumentos de renta que son permanentes por siempre. ¿Qué piensan? And so, this tenant coalition is made up of eleven buildings that we organized with this Casa. There's nine hundred families living in them. And they're fighting against almost ten million dollars in permanent rent increases. And I asked, what do you people think of that? Y esos solo los edificios que sabemos. Hay otros que tienen que luchar sin nuestro apoyo de Casa, the Northwest Bronx, the Banana Kelly, que no saben cómo defenderse. And there's so many folks out there that are fighting MCI's on their own, that don't have the support of an organization like Casa, Northwest Bronx, or Banana Kelly. Y entonces mucha gente no está aquí esta noche, pero están afectados. Sabemos ya en mi tiempo, ya unos cuatro años, conozco mucha gente que se han muado a otros estados, que se van del Bronx porque ya no aguantan más por todo lo que sufren cada día. And so, in my time at Casa, I've just seen countless tenants that I've worked with that have just had to leave the state because of rent increases, the conditions, they just can't bear anymore, and the sacrifices they have to make for their family. Y la otra cosa que quería dejar con acabar esta noche es que es el impacto de lo que estamos haciendo hoy. And the thing I wanted to leave with tonight and recognize is the impact of what we're doing today. Todo lo que han venido aquí y dado testimonio, han mostrado su poder, su coraje, su determinación. Y quiero decir que lo aprecio mucho. And so, I wanted to thank everyone who came up here, who testified, who had the courage, restraint to do this because I know it's not easy. Sé que no es fácil. Y que esa es la historia verdad. Sé que había Canal Doce y Canal Siete. Lo que voy a decir antes esta noche es que inquilinos están protestando aumentas de renta. So, we know that Channel Seven was here, Channel Twelve, and their story is gonna be tenants are protesting rent increases. Pero si yo tenía que escribir, esa historia es diferente. Yo veo al pueblo unido. No importa lo que están pasando, pero ustedes están aquí esta noche presente. Están compartiendo sus historias, están demostrando su poder. Y para que en un lugar como en cinco años, estemos en otro diferente espacio, que no estemos haciendo esto cada año, porque es un poco ridículo, ¿cierto? And so, I wanna thank everyone that came here tonight and testified because we're working, we're organizing, today's the first step. And the vision is for five years down the line that we're not just testifying because this process is a little ridiculous, right? So, I also added, if I had to write the story, it's something different. It's a community coming together, uniting, and fighting back. Because usted no escucha esto todos los días, because you don't hear about it every day. Pero yo lo veo y los agradezco mucho por todo su tiempo, por todo su trabajo, por tocando todas las puertas, por hablando con la gente de vecino. Eso es el mundo que estamos creando juntos. And so, I also just wanted to thank people for all the time you spend door knocking, talking to your neighbors, doing outreach in the street to create a different world, one in which we don't have to do this process in the future. And that's our, and today is just a start, right? Porque solo empezamos. So, I thank all of you that came here and stuck it out. Y le doy gracias a todos que vinieron aquí, aguantaron.
Thank you.